Say good evening. If you haven't had a chance to sign in, Debbie, can you raise your hand? You can sign in right over there. I believe Judy or Quincy, one of your council people,
Yeah, I'm finna get started.
had asked to do that. Are we, are we ready to get started?
Yeah, I'm finna get started.
Or do you want me to?
I'll get started.
Alright.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Come on up.
Okay.
I'm a half councilman. Thank you guys for coming out. This is our, this is my third town hall meeting for the third ward. One of the things I want to show is the partnership of us working together with council. So throughout some of these town hall meetings, you'll see some of us having town hall meetings together. With this town hall today, we have some similarities because we on the east side, and my ward is one of the biggest wards, so I'm having town hall meetings in pockets of areas so that I can try to make sure that I target. So, welcome. We're gonna open up. I'm gonna have Judy give some words, and then we'll have the host church come and welcome us, and also give a prayer and blessing, and explain to us what they do, and we're gonna proceed. Some of you guys may have an agenda for those that will be presenting today. You will be able to see where you at on the agenda. We got a lot to cover. We got a lot of issues over here, and oh my God, when I was out here passing out flyers yesterday, it was very devastating to see. I almost was in tears walking up and down the sidewalk just looking at how bad the east side is, how much blight is over here, and just the house after house after house. We got a lot of work to do, so with me and you working together, we going to see what we can do to put our heads together, and I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I wanna let you know that Quincy put this together. I'm just on his shirt tails, so I really appreciate that. It's difficult for me, especially this time of year because I do taxes, you know, tomorrow. So, but you know, when I was knocking on doors and campaigning and I walked through this area, I did cry. I did cry, and I am fighting for the residents of this area, aren't I, Michael? And I'm constantly, I drive around, I'm constantly reporting blight, and, but I need your help too because I don't see everything. I find out pictures of, from over fences, people send me pictures, and then I can report it, which I don't see as I'm driving around or walking around. So we need you to tell us too, and I think one of that's, that's our biggest problem in this part of the ward is the blight, the burnt down buildings, the buildings that are just shells and have squatters living in them. That's what we need from you. So anyways, thank you so much for coming out. By the way, I need volunteers to serve on boards. If anybody wants to serve on a board, come see me. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the church. Okay.
Alright, good evening again. Let's bow our heads and say a quick prayer, and then we'll get started. Dear Lord, what an awesome God you are to bring us all together here at Flint's East Side Franklin Avenue Mission, where we'd like to reach out, help where we can, do what we can do for the community and whatever their needs are. We pray that we have a productive meeting, and we have open ears, and we're all listening to what the needs are and how our council people and how the city can help them. In your name we pray, amen. Alright, I gotta warn you, this microphone in the system's pretty old, so it has a tendency to crackle. So hopefully we'll be good to go. If not, we might need to use our louder voices inside. Again, I am Sherri Rusink. I'm the operations director here at Franklin Avenue Mission, and we're so glad to have each and every one of you here. We are open as a mission on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and mainly, we do what we can to serve. So we provide a warm meal. Every Tuesday, Thursday, the doors open at three. Meal starts at four forty-five. You're all welcome to attend, to come, even to volunteer or eat. We just love seeing your faces here, and it works out with, we have a team of seven different crews that fulfill the needs and make the food in our commercial kitchen right behind the serving line there. Other things that we do is a personals closet, so shampoo, conditioner, toilet paper, toothbrush, toothpaste, those type of items. We get all by donation, or if we have the funds from grants, we purchase them. And we do that once a month. We do it for the children, we do it for adults, whoever does come. I would say pretty much every Tuesday, Thursday, we provide a hundred meals, and we usually serve about seventy-five right now, and then whatever's left over, we hand out. It's almost always a hot meal. We go to great states to maybe treat this like this is a restaurant and to be served where they're getting a nicely cooked meal. Again, clothing closet. So East Side Mission, which is right down the road, handles a lot of the community's clothing needs, but we do have a small closet with a closet manager, and when the people are in the diner, you know, we have things that are donated. She will then give them out to the community to the best of their needs. So we do take some donations, and also again with grants or private donations, we try to buy what we can. If not, we know East Side has an awesome closet that is helping them out with, so. Diapers and wipes. So we do, we're very fortunate. We go to the food bank, and the food bank, I don't know if anybody knows, but they have a really nice discount on diapers and for the kids that need, that are in need, and then wipes as a donation because some people don't have showers. So we hand out wipes if that be the case, they can clean themselves or whatever they need to do. We do partner with other people in Flint. I don't know if anybody's heard of Pets in Peril. Pets in Peril is an awesome organization that they will provide us dog food, cat food, that we try to distribute all their extras. We have a, if you parked in the lower parking lot, there is a shed there, and we call it the pet food shed. So we try to make sure the community gets that when we have it, and again, that is based on donation or unless the food bank has an awesome deal that we can purchase that for. Other things that we do, let's see, we have hosted a summer pet vaccination clinic for the Pets in Peril, and that's usually in the upper parking lot where probably most of you guys parked. And we had over four hundred pets vaccinated this past summer, so that was awesome. Trying to keep all the animals healthy and whatnot, and we do Christmas gift giveaway for the kids, occasional food bag away, giveaways, fam jam. There's Debbie sitting at the table there. There's a brochure for fam jam. We have, we partner with other churches, and they refurbish bicycles, and we have a bicycle giveaway every summer, and that is a huge hit. And to see the kids light up and their faces light up with a bicycle is just, is awesome. And of course, there's adult bikes too, so it's, it services the whole community. Let's see, what else? We do host on Thursday a church service at the end of the meal. Sometimes it's down here with Pastor Jones, or it would be up in the sanctuary. Pastor would be here directly, but he and his wife just had a baby a week ago, so this is why you're stuck with me, but baby is happy and healthy, and the wife is doing well. Debbie, is there anything I'm missing? Debbie is our, kinda like our retired, well, she's a retired social, social care worker or social worker, I'm sorry, social worker. She's got thirty years. And she is a mainstay here because when we have the diner open, Debbie is our gal to go to because she tells them the variety of things, whether they need to pay utility bill, they need medical help. She is such vast knowledge on everything. What are some of the other things, Deb, that you help with?
I don't need a microphone. My voice carries real well, and it doesn't crackle. I'm retired from the Department of Health and Human Services, I have thirty-three years. So when I retired, the mission was opening, and it was roughly seven years ago, so that's why she says I'm a mainstay. Everybody that comes to the mission knows me, and I see myself as a facilitator. You got a slum board, I'm on it. I know how to tell you to handle it in court and what you need to do. You having a problem with depression, I know where to refer them. You have an addiction order, I've gone to court with them. So just about anything, you need medical help and you're not getting it, let me see what I can do to help you, plug you into the resources. I see myself as a facilitator for any needs that any of our guests have because of my experience, and I mean, I just love these people that come and the needs that they have. You know, it's priceless for me, and I would like to thank for them. That's how they use me there.
Yeah, yeah, and Debbie makes a big difference. And when they come to me, because I don't know if I mentioned, but part of that job is to run this diner, and they come to me, they could be upset crying, they, you know, I don't know what I'm gonna do, or there's, you know, a conflict with something. Debbie is the go-to, and I think everybody's used to me saying, "You need to talk with Debbie." Because I have a real estate background for seventeen years, but also I've been part of different missions, and I've been part of this mission for two years. So speaking of that, she said, "We've been around for seven here at Franklin," but then we are now actually Flint Mission Network. So there's four entities to Flint Mission Network. One is Franklin Avenue Mission, which we just talked all about, so I won't give you more of the details. But then there's York Avenue Mission, and if you see the little flyer that is sitting on your table, am I crackling? Okay, so I'm gonna look, sir. Maybe, oh, maybe, well, okay, well, let's.
So if you look at your flyer, let's turn this, oh, that's probably, alright, whatever. Anyhow, you have York Avenue Mission. So they have a food pantry and a clothing pantry, and they are open every Thursday, and York is located on the north side of Flint, up at Saginaw. And there's also a worship service there that Pastor Jones, that's the director here, also does a worship service there. So between that, the food and the clothes, and of course, the food comes from the food bank, we are associated with the food bank and getting our food from that. And then we also have a dinner every third Wednesday of the month, so the community could come and get another warm meal, and that's always a good option as well for families to go to. And then Luke Clinic, which if anybody's interested after this meeting, we can give you a tour of this whole facility and Luke Clinic, which is right outside the door. This is a very unique opportunity. So the first Luke Clinic, the original location is in Detroit. We are their second location right here, just across the hall, and it is for pregnant moms with their children, up to twelve years, they get infant, or I'm sorry, up to twelve months, they get infant care. And that is if you have no health insurance. So we have an ultrasound machine, we have a lab back there, we have someone disperses medicines back there. It is ran by a doctor and nurses that are all qualified individuals, and that has been such a blessing. So that partnership has really serviced the moms and the kids in this community. So that's been going on, Brian, how long's that been going on now? Is that a year and a half? Yeah, a year and a half now, and that's every second and fourth Wednesday of the month. So we have two days that are dedicated to that here in the facility. We make them food to take for their family, they get their exams, they get everything they need. We have what's called Benjamin's Closet, where it's his private. That is full of baby clothes, potential pack in place, whatever the mom needs, receivable blankets, you name it. We have it there. We have it, and we try to help, but again, that's all private donation, potential grants. So you can kinda see that we're spread a little bit to different directions and trying to help the community. Last but not least, okay, so if you parked in this upper parking lot, you will see a playground. And next to that playground is a yellow house. That is Mercy, Mercy House. And Jolana, can you raise your hand? She is staff at the Mercy House. And you can correct me or add anything you might wanna add, but it's transitional housing for moms with children. And we can serve up to four families at one time. We partner with Wells Springs Lutheran Ministries, and they run the management side of all the health and the issues and the social help with that. We get to pay the bills and love on them, and make sure the facility is not in disarray if it needs repairs, then that falls upon us. So it can serve up to sixteen people total, and moms are all self-sufficient. You say, Jolana, that they're self-sufficient, but they're there for housing if they have nowhere to live, or it's not domestic abuse related, but it's just for moms in a transition with their kids. So, and that's been just a wonderful blessing along with that. So that kinda gives you the four items of what we do and the four different umbrellas of different areas that we cover. I don't know where Brian just went, but after the meeting's good to go, if you have any questions for Debbie about any of our four entities, you can go to Debbie. If you have anything for Mercy House, you can talk with Jolana, and then you can speak with me or Brian, which is the tall guy back there. I don't know where he went, but, okay. Anyhow, he is the chairman of our board of directors, so he's definitely involved and in charge of a lot of different decisions that are made as well.
Are they all here?
I'm gonna turn this over because I'm talking too much, and I could keep going, so.
Hello. Going fine, hi. Come on in.
Thank you.
Was that the people who were at the store?
Thank you so much. Where your microphone at over here?
Okay.
Right here.
Is it working?
Hi.
Alright, let me try yours. Alright, thank, thank you. Y'all, can we give her a round of applause in the work that they doing over here? They doing such great work.
This store, what about the other store?
And when I did come and tour this place, I was amazed at the work that they was doing over here. One of the things when I do have town hall meetings, I wanna have town hall meetings at places that give, that's doing great things in the community. So I don't just wanna randomly have no town hall meeting anywhere. The next subject matter that we will be talking about.
But when they come, there is nothing to be seen. Neighbor's house hasn't blown, nothing is caved in. We don't know what they are, but it's kinda mysterious, and it's kinda freaky, we don't know. You know, so it's the fear of the unknown, you know, and a lot of things that go through people's mind is just what happened over here on Holga. You know, I mean, whether they're resumbling, whether they're not, there's something going on, and it's not like it's just on a Monday at two o'clock or a Friday at eight AM. This happened random days, random times, sunny winter, summer. It is so loud. I've heard people say it's rattled their windows. People had thought trees had fallen in their house. People had thought cars had went through their house. And as a resident, I'm concerned because at the velocity of these sounds, there is no way, nobody could convince me, that many of we have had, that it's not damaging our foundations. And I'm sure some of you even in the fourth ward have heard them because I run a Potter Longway page as well, and those people also comment the loudness of they hear. I've heard people that turned it over on Merritt Drive off Genesee.
Wow.
So it's not just within a mile. You know, people were saying it's the junkyards crushing the cars. If it's, if it's a junkyard, people over in Genesee, people out on Irish Road aren't gonna hear that. You know, people, the train debunking, you're not gonna hear that all over. But there's got to be an answer for that. We've got to find out what it is because people are ready to sell their homes and go on.
I thought I read in the paper that, I have to put the chief on the spot, but the bomb squad was involved?
I was told too that they have a secret area where they detonate bombs, but there was a day that we heard them. We called nine one one. They did send out a, it was a sheriff. He come to my home, and that day, he stated that that officer that was in that hit and run accident, and he had eventually passed, he was one of them who helped run that. So the day that we heard that, they verified that it was not the bomb detonating area because of the fact that was the day of this gentleman's funeral.
And you can't triangulate it.
Not that I'm able to do. So, but I'm sure if any of you guys have ever heard it, I have a page. It's called Loud Booms.
I heard.
If you are on that page, go ahead and remark on it when you see it or when you hear it. You know, what it sounded like, the time of the day, because I started that page just to try to give an idea if there's a pattern as to when they're happening. So if any of you guys are hearing them.
I'm hearing it.
You know.
It has shifted my house, and it has the trimming around, you know, your walls and stuff. Just loosening that up, and I know that's where it come from, because like you said, you hear every now and then, you say, "What the hell?"
And some are louder than others.
Yes.
Some sound more faint, but it's made louder over towards Davis and Rhodes.
It sounds like a bomb, you know.
Something, right. I have a woman. Yeah, there was one day, we heard three of them in one day, a couple hours apart. You know, there's a lady who lives over on, in Potter area, and she was sitting at her kitchen table. And when that happened, you could see her vibration of her camera inside her home because she was monitoring her mother, you know, she had to take care of her mother. And you could see the camera actually shaking. So I don't know what it is. I don't even wanna guess what it is because, like I said, if it's a junkyard, I've heard people say sonic booms. That they fly up above, and then you get the sonic boom. Well, if that's the case, I think whatever it is, if it's a sonic boom, if it's a junkyards, they should have a certain timeframe to where, like we do the tornado sirens when they put those out. We know it's the first Saturday in the month at one o'clock. So if there's something going on and it is a sonic boom, have it be every Friday at noon? So people aren't alarmed when they hear it. You know what I mean, so.
I think they should have it. They should go in the country because it's affecting people's homes.
Yes, yes.
It don't need to be in the city.
I agree, I agree.
Sonic booms aren't gonna move your foundation, unmove the windows, but if you've been up in Camp Grayland area, you know the difference.
I'm gonna turn this over to Quincy, but like I said, I do have a Loud Booms page. If any of you wanna join it, if you need to hearing that, they're more than welcome to join it.
Thank you so much. So what I've asked them to do is anytime they hear, write it down, daytime when they hear. I wanna briefly bring up Mona Yunis, who's been working real diligently with us with the environmental issues that will help us lead the effort and tell us what the process gonna be and us moving forward. Also, because we got so much moving parts going on in the third ward, we was just up in court Thursday all day. I was kinda asleep, but I'll say.
You came off your job.
Yeah, yeah, so we had an update. As you guys know, we've been dealing with this Ajax plant appeal situation. So can you briefly update us on the Ajax plant situation? And also talk to us about the Title VI, because we also met with EPA briefly about this boom noise, and tell us what the process we gonna do for us to be able to move forward.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So, yeah, so I'm with an organization called the Environmental Transformation of Flint. We're an environmental justice org here in Flint. And we've been working with a lot of other partners to stop the Ajax plant from, we wanted to stop them from building, but we're trying to still stop them from operating off of carpet and roads. That will bring a lot of pollution into the neighborhoods of especially like there. So Quincy wanted me to talk really quickly about the process we used to file two civil rights complaints against actually the state, Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, and then also against Genesee Township. And so Title VI complaints are one tool in our tool belt for environmental justice issues. So there's the nineteen sixty-four Civil Rights Act, and that basically says, you know, federal money cannot be used to discriminate. And so with the Ajax case, what we're saying is that the state, by issuing the permit to pollute, is violating civil rights, and also Genesee Township is violating civil rights because they keep concentrating all their heavy industry near black neighborhoods in Flint and Genesee Township. And they've been, they have a long pattern of trying to push out affordable housing projects. So when you take that history together, it's a, it's a pattern of systemic racism. And so we have a complaint against the state through the EPA, and so we're going through a facilitated negotiation process to, we're really trying to get the state to change the way it does permitting and to put it down to stop this permit. And then the other complaint, other civil rights complaint against Genesee Township is through HUD. And so basically, you work with the federal agency that is most relevant for your complaint. So the way that we would approach that for the booming issue, and I'm interested to hear like as this progresses, um, how we can support, is you actually write on to document every, all the times, what does it sound like, where is it located, who are the people that are hearing it? As much data as you can gather, because when it gets down to whether it's legal action through a lawsuit or whether it's a civil rights complaint, you wanna have all that documented. So just one thought, we might even wanna think about setting up like an online survey that people could just do and have everything kind of populated behind the scenes on a spreadsheet, so we don't have to go back through tax. So if anybody wants to talk with me more, I'd love to work with you and strategize, and, and, okay, yeah, and just figure out like how we can support. Because I'm hearing complaints from all over the place on this too, but you guys are really feeling it. So last thing I just wanted to say with the civil rights complaint is that yes, you wanna document because you have to build your case. So after, like if the EPA, for example, accepts the civil rights complaint, then you would be present, like you would be presenting our case. With the Ajax complaint, it was, it was really helpful to work with a, with a team of pro-wono attorneys. So thankfully, we don't have to pay, which really helps because having that kind of legal muscle behind what we're doing has been really important. So in that case, we're working with the Great Lakes Environmental Law Center, Earth Justice, and the National Housing Law Project. I've also made them all aware of this booming issue, and every time we've had a chance to talk to folks in the state or the EPA, I've mentioned it too, like this is, you know, there's, we're trying to figure out where it is and what's happening, but we're hearing increased complaints about this. So it's on the radar at least. Okay, so then the last thing I just wanna say for Ajax lawsuit is that Judge Newblatt is hearing all of the cases. So this is a, it's kind of an unusual lawsuit in that I'm with a number of, like five community organizations that are suing the state to try to stop the permit. The city of Flint also took the lead and is suing the state to stop the Ajax permit. And then Ajax is suing the state to try to relax the protections that we all fought so hard for in the permit. So a permit basically says how you can pollute, what you can pollute, how much you can pollute, and what safety measures you have to put in place, and it's very specific to the kind of, you know, activity that you're trying to protect against. So we had, I think, about seven hours in court where Judge Newblatt heard all the sides. What I can say is I thought he asked really good questions. He seemed, he seemed sympathetic to the community, and typically in these cases, a lawsuit would stop a permit on the grounds of the technicalities or the science of the permit. So again, it's a different tool. If you do a civil rights complaint, that's on the basis of discrimination, but a lawsuit that's on, you know, the science of, does a permit discriminate, or does a permit, for example, violate the National Clean Air Act, for example? So we have, so right now, we're in the wait-and-see mode. So he, basically the judge is listening to all the different sides, and he's gonna issue a ruling. And then if we don't get the answer we want, then we go to, we appeal it, so go through the appellate court. So I don't know when we're gonna have an answer, I hope soon, but I also hope he takes time to really deliberate and be thoughtful, and really to know that, you know, I hope Judge Newblatt hears this and knows that he is playing a really key role because the Ajax case is one of the, you know, environmental justice issues of our time that I think we're gonna be hearing about for decades and for generations, just like the Genesee power station and generator, which was a huge fight in the nineties in the very same industrial park. And NAACP and Mrs. Jolone and CBOP and I think Sierra Club and others fought that. And on the last day of Obama's administration, the EPA ruled. And on the last day of Obama's administration, the EPA ruled that there was a discriminatory process that led to the permit, but they didn't actually stop the plant. So, we're, we're pushing for, um, a strong and clear response this time. So, it's not just to say, well, this was problematic, but, you know, you're gonna have to live with it anyway. That's, that's not acceptable. So, see to, um, and hopefully we'll have some more, uh, some good news by the time of next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, um, yeah, we were on applause. Also, she has a sign up sheet right here that she'll be circulating if anyone want to sign to join her coalition to help her with the work that they're doing around here. Now, let's get to the meet of the, uh, meeting, the blight. I know a lot of people who want to hear about blight.
Yeah.
I'm hearing about it.
Oh. Need. Listen, so, uh, without no further ado, I want to bring up the Genesee County Land Bank to talk about the process. As you guys know, we got a lot of funding to tear down houses and, uh, people wondering when are we going to tear the houses down? I was over, um, my, um, Quentin mother house the other day was at Delaware Street I've been. And, uh, while I was sitting on the porch and looking across the street, I was just looking at how bad it looked over there. So, my heart go out to you. I hear you and I know he tired of me fussing, but oh well, I'm on the board. I, we work together, so I'm gonna turn it over to Michael and he'll take it from here.
And please, it's a chat attempt.
Huh? No, that's all right. Hi, uh, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, my name is Michael Freeman. Should be here. Yeah. Okay. Um, my name is Michael Freeman. I'm a Flint resident, uh, first Flint resident to run the Genesee County Land Bank. Um, so I think I bring a pretty good perspective, uh, community perspective to this job. Um, what, you know, I started about three, almost three years ago. And when I started, it was during the pandemic and everything was, you know, communication was shut down. I mean, basically we could only use like Zoom calls. Not everybody uses Zoom calls. Um, long ago, like Dan Kildy would go ward to ward and every month he would be in a different ward having a presentation. And I believe very much that this is something that needs to start up again. So, I'm happy to be here tonight because there's a lot of information that is out in the community that's, that we need to be able to deal with and to clarify what's going on. Um, so I know we don't have a long time tonight. I could probably take up like an hour talking about the stuff that is important. Um, but I know that a lot of people tonight want to hear about the demo program. So, I'm not gonna take away from my demo team and them talking about what's going on and what we'll be seeing in, uh, in these wards. Um, so I think that, uh, a couple things, uh, you're gonna see a lot of changes at the land bank and the work that we're doing in the community. Um, demolition is critical and cleaning up properties is critical, uh, but we have to be able to do more. And, and, uh, you, you just don't improve a community or neighborhoods by just removing structures. You gotta put the stuff back too. So, we're gonna talk more about that. Um, I'm gonna be coming back and talking about all these different things that we're doing around sales and disposition and property maintenance. Um, one, uh, piece of news that's great that we just got, uh, was through the U of M Youth, uh, Youth Violence Prevention Grant. Uh, we just got three hundred thousand dollars over three years and that's going to be used for demonstration projects around the city, um, where we're looking at different interventions, like how do we keep people from dumping on our vacant lots? So, is it, you know, some people, if you've driven around the city where we've already done this, where we put rocks, like larger stones, so people can't cross over onto the lot to dump. Uh, is it cameras? Is it lighting? Is it signage? So, this money will actually help us in forty different locations throughout the city actually start to gauge, you know, what is the approach that we should take to keep people from dumping on properties? As well, uh, this money will help us now, sir, we've had, uh, during the summers, we have a maintenance crew, uh, that goes throughout the city. We run about five or six different teams of people. Uh, generally, we do, every year, the land bank supports over fifty thousand mows in the city of Flint. So, uh, this, you know, if we can populate these crews, and if you know people looking for employment right now, please have them contact the land bank because we gotta fill these jobs. Because the more people that we have actually working on our crews, the more mowing we can get done for the season. During the pandemic, we were down to a team of three people, so we still got over twenty-two thousand mows done with just those three teams. So, um, we are looking for people right now. The mowing season is gonna start, um, I believe the May sixth is when they're gonna start going around the city. We go like a typewriter. We go from the west to the east, on the north of the city, and we just work our way all the way down. And when we're done, if the weather is still warm, if it's still rain season, we start them up again and then we keep them going throughout the entire city. Um, so, uh, the other thing that we're gonna do is where we've had their seasonal work crews that are in the summer, we now are actually gonna have seasonal work crews in the winter months that aren't gonna focus on mowing, but they're gonna work on non-structural blade issues, you know, taking care of downed trees, uh, cleaning out houses that are filled with garbage and debris, um, dealing with the dumping as well. So, we're gonna be running this all year round. So, it's all, you know, land bank properties, they don't come with any money or support. Uh, it's only a minimal amount through the treasurer's office. So, through our property sales and our other, in grant making, uh, or getting grants, we're, um, we're able to do what we do at the land bank. Just in this area alone, just driving by, I, I need to point out the Brown's Funeral Home, uh, which that was one that really kept me up at night, whereas like it's, it's a dangerous structure. It had asbestos in it. And, you know, I'm like, that, that's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar demo. Like, that could wipe out, you know, the dollars that we get from the city of Flint, it'd be gone just on one structure. But we work really closely with the EPA. Uh, we're very responsible. Like, we know that we have to do clean demolition, clean activities as well. They reward us by actually giving us supplemental grant support. So, we were able to get, um, within a couple weeks, we submitted Brown's Funeral Home to the EPA for an emergency response, which is the fastest thing that could possibly happen. Like, if you use other federal funds, it's a, it's a waiting game. This one, they approved us within two weeks. They had the entire site, uh, fenced off. They brought in heavy equipment. They brought everything down on that site and that was leveraging dollars. Flint didn't pay for that. It was actually the EPA and federal government. And so, we'll continue to work with the EPA, just like Davidson and Franklin Road. Um, that, after that arson, we were able to get the EPA to come in and do the exact same thing. So, uh, you know, there's, we have to be really creative and nimble with how we actually get this work done. Um, but that I think is a fairly decent lead in to the demolition conversation. I promise I will be back and we're gonna talk about a lot of other things, our sales program, disposition, our land contracts, the ways that we're trying to get properties back on the tax roll. So, I'm gonna turn this over to my staff. I have Brandon S. Fead, he's my communications manager. I have John Mateen and then I have Faith Benholm, who's at the, uh, the back table. And then Faith and John are actually, uh, they're the ones who are running our demolition program.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Mateen. I'm a demolition program manager at the land bank. And I'm happy to be here with you all tonight and I'm definitely happy to be working on the demolition program. I'm also a Flint resident. I've been born and raised fifteen every day. Born and raised during my entire life and, um, well, I haven't seen the, uh, greatest times of Flint, like a lot of you may have seen. I've seen pockets of it and some of the areas and streets that I grew up on, uh, they have more abandoned houses on them, more blights and, uh, more homes that need to be demoed. Uh, so I want to give an update on our demo program, uh, where we are today, the things we take into consideration when we demo a property and, um, where we're going in the future. And if you all have any questions, I'll be quick. I'll try to be quick and answer a few. If not, um, I can give you my contact information and we can go from there. So, um, as of spring twenty twenty-three, we've secured forty-three point seven million dollars, uh, to address up to nineteen hundred properties. Uh, we hope to get up to two thousand, but with the funding we have now, nineteen hundred is our number. Uh, here on the east side, between the third and fourth ward, all of the funding considered, uh, we're planning to hit a hundred, seven hundred and five structures. Right? Okay? Yes. So, uh, we got our first bid, uh, March twenty-fourth, we signed our first contract. Um, we, that was a bid we issued in January. And I will say on that specific award, we have thirty-two properties between the third and fourth ward scheduled to come down. Hopefully no later than May twenty-sixth. Uh, so we're doing some work now, um, trying to get these properties taken down. Uh, I know that you all might have some frustrations, um, as a lot of citizens have around how long it takes and how much money it takes. Um, so the funding that we get, um, is federally regulated, so we run a federally regulated demolition program. And it comes with a lot of different requirements. One of those requirements being environmental surveys. So, you heard Michael touch on a structure that has asbestos. A lot of the structures that we tear down, they have asbestos. A lot of them are not structurally silent to get full surveys and so they have to be demolished a specific way to protect all of the citizens living near the structures we're taking down. Uh, beyond environmental surveys, we also have to make sure that the contractors we award bids to have the proper licensing. They have the staff that can identify asbestos. Uh, they have the staff to know what to do with the structure if an environmental survey fell short of identifying all hazardous materials and all asbestos in the property. Uh, and so we struggle with that as well. So, another thing that we're attempting to do is, uh, put more attention towards identifying more contractors, uh, that can complete the work. So, we've held a contractor pre-qualification training and we also held a, uh, training at, I believe it was, uh, the Wade, the McCree Theater, um, did a contractor training there as well to go over our requirements and debt. Uh, what else I think? Am I missing anything, Faith or?
Um, I would just talk about how we're working through it a little bit.
Oh, absolutely. So, um, the way that we're working through, uh, we have an initial bid pack called the kickoff pack. And, um, it touches pretty much all wards within the city. Um, and it's hitting the highest priority properties that we have in our inventory of structures to demo. Uh, once this pack is over with, we're gonna work in a clockwise session, uh, starting northwest, the northwest, uh, corner of Flint. Um, and it's following a, um, census, census tracks, um, in the city of Flint. And we have that map published on our website as well.
Going, haven't it?
We're going to. We're gonna get to it. Uh, that way you can get a good idea of the number of properties in each ward that are gonna come down, um, and that, and that sort of thing.
How many in the third ward?
So, in the third ward, um, I don't have a specific number. I know it's between the third and the fourth, uh, but I can make sure I get you the numbers specifically.
Oh, Lord.
Michael.
We demand the number.
No, Mike, you told me twenty-four in the fourth ward, right, Michael? Twenty-four in the fourth ward.
You've got more than that.
We got way more than that.
Just on the first bid.
Yeah.
Yeah, just in, just in the first bid.
Just in the first bid.
Just in the first.
That will be down in May.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So, we're doing everything we can to stay on track there. Um, and that, that's addressing, that's addressing stuff. Market demos, I know that a big interest for people, there are unfunded demolitions. We're continuing to look for funding. We're continuing to prioritize properties, um, and identify properties. So, if you see things in the community that you want to address, you find out that it's owned by the land bank, give us a call, complain as much as you can, uh, because that's how we take into consideration what to address next. You know, once we start getting beyond the, um, uh, framework that we're working on now, you know, we want to make sure that we're addressing things that are causing harm to families, to children, um, just cleaning up the streets.
What tools can we use to see what's funded?
So, you can use the Flint Property Portal. You can get right on there, type in an address, um, scroll down and it'll find information on whether or not a demo is funded. Uh, if it is funded, you can call the demolition program at the land bank and we can let you know when it's expected to be demoed. Um, now, that's just a rough estimate. You call and ask us, hey, when is this coming down? I might tell you something like June, because I want to make you happy on the phone. Um, but because of everything that we have going on, um, in terms of making sure we're doing things right, following the regulations, sometimes these timelines can be pushed out a little bit further. So, yeah, got a question.
I actually got a notice on my door about a demo in a couple, you know, a few weeks.
Okay.
Is that few weeks, May twenty-sixth, the May area?
Absolutely. If you got that on your door, then it's in the May twenty-sixth, uh, area that we should have that structured now.
What do you do about a house that been abandoned for years and is privately owned, but it's the, it's the demolition itself?
I don't think it's coming.
Because it's caving in.
Caving in.
Uh, yeah, it's a privately owned. What do you, how do you, what process do you go through to have the owner have it demolished? Because it's caving in.
Absolutely.
The force dunk caved in, the rodents done. Got in the basement where it looked like it's about to sink in. So, what process did you go through with somebody that owns a house that need to be demolished?
Uh, so there's nothing that can be done through the land bank right now privately owned structures. The best thing to do is talk to your council people, bring it up to the city of Flint. I have Michael coming up. He might have some more information to share with you.
Yes, so, you know, one of, one of the things that, in, in this whole process, you know, we went out, we, we did three thousand, uh, inspections. Like, we had to get updated information on what was happening in the community, just to make sure that when we were going after the houses, we had them prioritized right, we're doing it right. And initially, our count was like two thousand, you know, two hundred properties in the city of Flint that needed to come down, that were in the Flint Property Portal. Well, you go out and do inspections, there's been arson, there's been all, all manner of things that have stayed in place. So, we've, we now know that we have more properties. You know, I can no longer say this is gonna take care of all of the legacy properties in the city of Flint like I hoped we were going to. So, we need to go out and get more money. I need to go out and fundraise additional dollars for this program. Now, the state of Michigan has, uh, you know, in the last round of blight money, we got shut out. At the last minute, elected officials went in and put in all their earmarks. There were seventy-five million dollars available and then everybody took their piece of the pie. And Detroit got a twenty million dollar earmark. Ionia, Michigan got a ten million dollar earmark. And then we were only eligible, sorry, to apply for two hundred thousand dollars. Where ninety percent of the blighted properties owned by land banks in the state of Michigan, ninety percent are in Flint and Detroit. And we got shut out, okay? So, this is where we need to start getting loud with our state elected officials and where all of you today can help. Um, that you getting the support from the state of Michigan. You know, we got, we got ARPA money from the city of Flint. We got ARPA money from the county. We got MOP Foundation dollars. This is one of the best leveraged pools of money that's ever been put together for our community and where's the state? We got two hundred thousand committed right now. The next round of blight money is much better for us. So, the top, the top ten largest land banks in the state of Michigan have now been guaranteed two point five million dollars.
Each or total?
Each. Yep, so Genesee County, Flint is gonna get two point five, uh, additional dollars, uh, for the demo program. Now, in this round of demo money, there is a thirty million dollar competitive pool. So, I'm going after that. Like, our, our cost overruns, so if I want to hit my like twenty-nine hundred, you know, properties in the city of Flint, we need advocacy. We need our state reps advocating for us that, you know, I want bare minimum ten. I think that we should get it and we deserve it. And I'm gonna go after that. There's no guarantee we're gonna get it. But all of you in this room, you know, it's like Flint cannot be ignored. Detroit is well taken care of because, you know, a lot of elected officials say, well, you know, on the urban agenda, we gave money to Detroit. We're, we're good. We're covered. But you got Piak, you got Saginaw, you got Flint. We are unique. You know, we're not like the west side of the state. Our needs are very specific. And so, we need to advocate for those resources that a lot's been done to Flint by the state and the state should be a leader there, making sure that our people are taken care of. So. To your question, uh, Michael, I want to get all this stuff down. But here's another fact though, everyone needs to understand too, is that the blade issue, like when you, every time you drive past a blighted structure, not always a land bank property. In fact, the stats are forty-six percent are owned by the land bank, but fifty-four percent are privately owned. You got, you got Family Trust in Modesto, California that are still paying the tax bill, but they're letting that house fall in.
Right, right.
We need, like, I'm gonna take care of the product or the public side of the blight issue with what I have available to me. We need accountability for all those people who are, who are making our neighborhoods look bad. So, this is another thing. So, when you drive by, you know, actually, we say we got thirteen thousand five hundred properties in the city of Flint. Um, ten thousand of those are vacant lots. We only got about thirty-four hundred properties with parcels on them, and if I'm taking down three thousand of those, the land bank will only have about fourteen hundred properties, which we will then sell and will move back into productive use. And our side lot program will get rid of these properties as well, certainly.
Are you still using the side lot acquisition process? And when you tear a house down next to a property, you give the owner next door a chance to buy that?
Absolutely. I do not, we do not want to sit on these properties. And like, under the hardest tip program, Michigan made a requirement, they made the disposition very challenging. And they're like, if the, the, the individual purchasing doesn't fit all these criteria, then you have to pay back the entire amount that you spent on the demolition. With the ARPA money, that is not the case. So with ARPA, if we demo it, and you have, you have a homeowner next to it, we'll, we'll sell. The first purchase that you do at the land bank, it's a twenty-five dollar acquisition on that property. So we want them out of our hands so that they're being cared for by people who care.
I have a question. You know, I live just a quarter mile away from here, and I drive by past this house often to go to bark, and I noticed it was vacant recently, right? And this is a year ago. And I went to the neighbor trying to find out who owns this, because I, I would buy it from them. You know, I looked it up first, you know, were they squatting, or did they own it? I could not identify the individual. The neighbors were renters, so they didn't know the neighbor. And since that time, it has been stripped, the front door is off, the garage is off, now it's just blank.
Is it land bank property?
No, no. What I'm saying is it was owned by someone.
Oh, got it, got it.
And if there could be a way where individuals that are just going to get up and leave a property, that they could get a small, because I'm sure they would have sold it for two hundred bucks to me. Just because they owe probably like three thousand on water bill and back taxes and all that, well, I would have still bought it for that, knowing that I would have more blight in my community, and my daughters can grow up in the neighborhood, that's, doesn't look like it.
You're, you're right, we, we need to get ahead of the issue. You know, we need to be able to get the four properties, and at the, at the land bank, because I, I told someone the other day, they're just like, what's the future of the land bank? I'm like, working our way out of business, right? We shouldn't need to have a land bank. So everything that we do should be trying to get properties back on the tax rolls, get them back into productive use. We actually just had a, we had this guy come in, a researcher, who looked at foreclosures in the city of Flint. The, what he found was less than one half of one percent of land bank properties that we sell end up back in foreclosure. The ones that went through the normal auction process, fifty-seven percent. We have ways, what we do is disposition of property, we make sure that whoever's taking on that property is responsible, and, and it will be productive for that neighborhood. So the stats are trying, they're, they're informing us that what we're doing is starting to work. And ideally, like, what, I thought during the pandemic, one year the treasurer decided not to do foreclosures. The next year, she decided only to foreclose on non-principal residents. And then I thought, oh, man, the third year, I'm like, this is when we're going to get slammed. It was really because, and they did full foreclosure, but actually, we saw, we did not see an increase in what came to us. So that, to me, is good, because that actually kind of means that the foreclosure issue, like, we might have hit that peak, and then we'll see fewer and fewer foreclosures going through.
You know, on that note, maybe we speak on this more later, but when I came here in two thousand sixteen, and shortly after being here, I ended up purchasing three homes, two of them which were land bank, and twenty lots. And I did so without having much money. Now, if I want to go to the land bank and get another home, now I need to show that I have a lot of money, and I don't. So now I can't, I can't save property.
Is that, is that a feature home?
Or is it, they're, they're, we have? Well, right now it's more difficult, because often the properties I've been hiding are not on the future loan, and I'm no longer even able to put a bid on it. All the ones that I bought before were not featured, but I put out a bid, and I successfully got it. Now, it's very much more restricted for myself. I work for a small nonprofit, I don't make a lot of money, I just barely get by, but I'm trying to better this community. Now I need to show that I have enough money for a roof, enough to fix a basement, enough to do that. Whereas in the past, I was able to take it off, I'm a chief, and slowly but surely fix those homes. And now they're better. So I feel like poor people, including myself, are not able to participate in creative blight.
So, so what we're doing, we're, we're changing our programs as well. And we're, like, I'll give you this really great example, there's a, I don't know if anyone's ever seen Pop the Builder on YouTube. He's the guy who's doing the rehab.
Adventure about the re-builder.
Huh?
Adventure about the re-builder.
Yeah, the re-builder, yeah. And this guy, like, he actually got a property that the land bank had no ability to do anything with. They were going to rehab it with NSP money, they decided not to do it, and this guy came forward and said, you know, it, it was not the policy at the time, but he's like, you know, I'll pick away at it, I'm going to, I'll keep on it. And they decided to work with him. And he, at first, he started, he just got the roof stabilized, which everybody knows, the second that your roof melts, the house is done. So he started doing that. He's been picking away at it, and he's been filming it on YouTube. And it's like, I would rather have people who are tenacious and that they want to, you know, if, if you have to pick at it, as long as there's progress being shown. Our issue is what happens when the progress stops? You know, because we've, there have been properties we sold in the past that people came in and said, you know, they were going to do the same thing, and then nothing happened. And now everyone in the neighborhood is mad at the land bank, because we sold to somebody who's letting this property turn feral. So these are, this is tricky, because we have to be consistent with our policies, we have to treat everybody the same. You can't pick and choose. But how do you do something that has flexibility to allow people to do creative things like you just said? So I, I hear you, and I, I support what you're saying, and we're going to continue to work through them.
Yeah, you're talking more about tearing up structures down. How about the place that's already burnt right to the ground, you know, down in the basement? And people come by, throw all their garbage in there. On my corner alone, I got six houses burnt right to the ground, there's nothing there.
And you know the problem, is everyone thinks that it's an easy solution. Like, they think it's like, well, now it's just a foundation, it's going to be a cheap demo. It's not, because now you have to treat every bit of what comes out of that hole as being covered with asbestos. Now you have to treat that differently, and so it's not cheaper. But those are our emergency demos as well, like, those are the ones that have a higher score, or rather, who have more consideration within the scoring of where we take down and what we take down. So we got to get those holes taken care of. I agree, they're a problem, they're things that, it's a magnet for dumping.
Makes the whole neighborhood just drag down Franklin here.
I know. I, we, you got, I got three, I got three thousand properties in the entire city. You see what's in your front yard, I see what's in our entire community as well.
People will not invest, people will not buy these houses and fix them up for what they're worth.
Yeah. I, I agree. And, but, like I said, we're, we're doing something about it with our demo program. Like, now, you're going to, you're going to see demo at a scale that you have not seen in the past.
I'd like to see a fourth ward that treats it just like everybody else does, as far as this meeting.
You're, 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 guess who's getting all the EPA grant fines?
I've been around, I've seen all these houses being built.
Leith, Leith and Iowa.
Let me talk.
I know.
Over all Saginaw Street over there, Wood Street. If people just go over there and see all them new condos being built, all them houses, who's paying for all that?
That's Choice Neighborhoods, and that's City of Flint, and I have nothing to do with that, so.
Thank you.
I know that there's a lot of questions.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
I'm going, I'm going to take a couple more questions, because we still got some more people on the program, so I want to keep the, uh, meeting moving. We can talk about blight all day. Martin, you got a question back there?
I, I just want to add one piece of information. I worked at the city previously, and I actually worked on the issue of what do you do when it's a private house that is unsalvageable and needs to come down, and the property owner just isn't doing anything about it?
Building Department.
Yes, and so the, so what we have to do is not only tell our council people, we have to submit complaints to the building, building safety and inspection department, and there's a building code board of appeals, and part of their responsibility is to review those cases. And what they can then do is basically vote to have it be, um, be like a city-approved demo, but there is a step that's missing, and I, I don't know where it's at now, because it's been a minute since I worked there. But basically, the building, safety and inspection department needs to, like, re-verify their process for calling for these emergency demos, because before, you know, before there was an emergency manager, the city had a demo department. And now that doesn't exist, and so the land bank can do the demos, but the city has to take that first step. And so when I was there, that was kind of the sticking point, that they just have to, like, re-verify their process. And so that would be something we can advocate for happening as soon as possible.
So there's two questions, but the first one, is there a way the Flint Property Portal can show its taxation numbers if it's a brownfield or a five oh four five or a five oh five?
What was the question?
Can you, on the Flint Property Portal, show the taxation so you can understand if it's a brownfield or a five oh five or a, you know?
I don't.
I think it's listed, the five fifty is, the five fifty is listed on there, and I believe brownfield is.
No.
It's not on there?
No, I don't think the original, so the original brownfield offering, those properties might not be identified, but those would be land bank properties, and that is definitely something you'd find out if you were interested in one, you could contact the land bank.
Yeah, that, that was, that, you know, that was where, before, it seemed like it was this great idea, and it turned out to be not so great idea in two thousand four, two thousand five, because then it encumbered the property and made it, you can't join the properties. And so we try to make disclosures, any time a person purchases a vacant property, we let them know that, you know, there may be a problem with doing a lot combination.
So they're trying to stall out the taxes for COVID, right? Do you foresee an avalanche next year, or, you know, where people can't make it?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay. I would look at that, I'd see a few.
So I, I should recognize that our mayor and state rep Cynthia Neely are here. Yeah, and, oh, yeah, I was just going to say, we just did, we, we did a, a presentation, and I think we're going to continue to do presentations where it's about a storm pervert between the city of Flint and the land bank. And so we have to work together, because this is such a big issue, and I'm very happy to have, you know, my friend and colleague, Mayor Neely here as well. And we were just talking about the state money we're going to go after out of that blight fund, that thirty million. We need your help, we want money. So thank you.
Yeah, a question back there.
Yeah, so if I ramble on, feel free to cut me off anytime. My neighbor and I, we have hut houses that were built in the seventies. They built them houses on irregularly shaped lots, which is not conducive to the neighborhood, uh, which means we got very small lots. The house around the corner behind us, they never should have rented. When I bought that, my house in ninety-five, that place should have been condemned back then. They've allowed us to kind of keep renting. Finally, I went to land bank, and I found out about it, I went down to land bank, and I handed right out a paper, I got permission to go on the property. Uh, I, me and a friend of mine boarded it all up the first time. And I told him, I said, my neighbor and I want that property, because we don't have any backyard. I will give you two thousand dollars to help knock that house down. And I will buy a lawnmower, you go back there with a brush cutter, cut that brush down, I'll buy a riding lawnmower, I'll go back there and keep that grass cut. I've got three hundred and fifty dollars just in cutting down the dead trees in that lot that were going to hit my house when they come down, because my, my backyard is about twenty-five foot deep. My neighbor's is about twenty, not even twenty feet deep, she can't use her back deck. Two wide open windows that they can't even get to the house to board by the time they came back. They didn't even try to, trees in the way. Things full of garbage, trash, and a dead dog. It's been burnt twice. I make my calls, I never get no answers back.
So who, who are you, who are you talking to?
I can't even get anybody to come over and look at the house when I am there to talk to them.
We'll send people in immediately. You give me the address before we leave today, and I will have somebody out there this week.
I got the address, I got the address.
All right.
Thank you so much. I want to, before I bring up the chief of police, because we got some great things going on in the third ward. Anytime I have a town hall meeting, I want to make an announcement of what we are doing to try to clean up the neighborhood. So I want to bring up Pastor Robertson at Good Church. This is their second year, I believe, of doing cleanup. They got a big cleanup coming up, where they had hundreds of people out cleaning up. So I just want him to share what you guys, before the chief of police come up. We also want to have the mayor give a couple of words after the chief heard the chief of police request to have some words. But without further ado, I would like Pastor Robertson of Good Church to come and talk about what they got coming up in the next month.
All right, good evening. Leo Robertson, I promise I won't take much of your time. Last year, we had, and I hear a lot of the complaints that was going on about your neighborhoods. We are trying our best to be proactive, bringing the community together. Last year, we had four hundred individuals attack our community when it comes to the dumping and the blight that's going on in our north side of the third ward, northeast side. And so, but what was impactful about that, four hundred people, we thought was going to go through about one mile radius, was only able to hit a block and a half because of so much overgrown grass and trees knocked down and all of that. So we decided to make this not just a yearly thing, but a, almost a, just a seasonal thing that we're going to do often. But this year, we're doing it May twenty-first, and we're making, we're partnering with the city, not just our community. And we have individuals coming from the east side, from the west side, because we want, it's not just, uh, obviously, it's not just a third ward issue, it's a fourth ward issue, it's a south side issue. So we're trying to create this model where people start to love their, that's one thing that we learned. When we started to love on our neighbors, they started to take more, like, this proactive idea that when we started to clean up our environment, we saw individuals stop the dumping in our community. And so when they saw us, like, pouring into it, the people wouldn't dump, they dumped less into the third ward on the northeast by our church. And so it's more being proactive. And if that's a community type of environment, maybe that would happen if that happens here in, in the fourth ward as well, where the community starts to clean up together, we start to care together, and less dumping happens, when people start to see us connect and unite together. It's not just this religious, but biblical, where you see it happen in the Bible, but it's about community, and the community gathering together, when people say, see us caring together. So that's it. We're doing that on May twenty-fourth, twenty-first, but we're starting to see it spread throughout the wards together. So with that being said, we're asking people with different skill levels to come on our ward, so that when they gather together in the third ward, we'll be able to make this movement over into the fourth ward. So I'm here just to pass out flyers. We had four hundred, like I said, last year, and, and we're expecting more this year. But again, we expect them to do it again this year, and we want to do it in the fourth ward as well, too. And we'll be connecting inside of this ward with the councilman here as well. So thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. They be having some good food, too, y'all. Um, so he got some flyers, he going to pass out if anyone. I would love for you to connect with the land bank, because a lot of those properties that you guys were cleaning up were land bank owned properties. So hopefully you can get with either Renetta Steed, Michael, to make sure that you guys are working together to make sure that happens.
And they have, they were beneficial in us last year, and they also have been helping us.
And also, that light-skinned guy back there, Mayor Neely, you want to make sure he give two dollars to, because he I know he got a bridge card or something in his pocket. So without further ado, you guys, I want to bring up the chief of police. As you guys know, the opium epidemic has been extremely bad in our community, especially on the east side, city of Flint, Genesee County. One of my neighbors died from an opium overdose, so I ended up taking his dog in for, you know, even prior when he was on it, and he wasn't taking care of his dog, so I ended up taking care of his dog, and then the dog ended up moving in with me, moving in my yard all the time. But it was well worth it. So I think what this has done to the community, and it has no color. It's affecting everyone. So I'm going to bring up the chief of police to talk about what is going on, and then I'll bring up the health board.
And Councilman Murphy. So real quick, I'm going to provide you with some statistics for the city of Flint, just for the city of Flint. The reason why is because the police department, our response Um, the reason why is because the police department, our response is data driven and evidence based. So I'm gonna give you a, 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 a real quick snapshot of our response to this opioid epidemic, um, in light of what we're gonna use the funding for. And I'll let the mayor speak on the, um, lawsuit settlement, opioid lawsuit settlement, federal lawsuit that we received funds for. So, um, and these are, um, statistics gathered from the year twenty twenty-two. So in twenty twenty-two, I'm gonna give you the, the, the statistics based on non fatal overdoses and fatal overdose deaths. In twenty twenty-two, we experienced six hundred and seventy-four non fatal overdoses, that's six hundred and seventy-four. The police department doesn't respond to all those, but it still, um, reflects on our workload and some of these incidents we have to respond to. So if you do the math, six hundred and seventy-four non fatal overdoses through an entire year, you're averaging almost three a week. And those are the ones that were reported, six hundred and seventy-four. We had seventy-seven fatal overdose deaths, seventy-seven. Seventy-seven individuals lost their lives on, um, overdose deaths. Now those have to be investigated by the police department, which is time consuming. So out of those overdose deaths and those non fatal deaths, roughly around seventeen percent are non fatal, the victim was administered Narcan. That's what saves their life, seventeen percent. Only four percent of EMS and poli- and police department personnel administered Narcan in those incidents. That means we get on scene after the fact. So if these overdoses are not witnessed and that seventeen percent had been administered Narcan and was non witnessed, you can see that number for the year two, two thousand twenty-two increased from seventy-seven. And you could probably add another twenty percent on to that. So that's, that's, that's tragic for a community, um, it's a lot of work. But it's work that can be, is, is something, these are situations that can be avoided.
I'm gonna run the change page, Chief.
Oh, you do, you do.
I need my mouse.
That's what. So the average age group, the majority of the age group were men thirty-five to forty-four for these overdoses. Ages thirty-five to forty-four. So they made up the most, um, not to say we didn't have younger age groups involved in it, but they just, they, they had a large percentage of those that overdosed, either non fatal or fatal. So the drug types of these overdoses are, number one, the number one drug is heroin. That's linked to majority of these non fatal overdoses and fatal overdoses inherently. It could be mixed with fentanyl, they crack cocaine and cocaine were safe. And meth, methamphetamine's played a role in it also, but the majority is heroin and fentanyl. Some of the data is, is incomplete, you'll see on, on some of these slides, you'll see unknown. And the reason why unknown is if someone is, uh, overdosed on heroin and is non fatal, only ones we can test is the fatal and it requires an autopsy and a toxicology and that takes quite some time to get that. We're just starting to receive that data back from some of those autopsies from the year twenty twenty-two. Takes about, they can take three to four months to get that toxicology result back. So as far as this, the issue, how the police department is gonna play a role in this, as the chief of police, I've been doing this thirty years. I've been involved in narcotic, specifically in narcotic investigations over twenty years specifically. We decided to come up with a strategy and use this opioid settlement money, funds to partner with organizations that are, their primary role is prevention and treatment. Prevention and treatment, that is the only way that we're gonna solve this issue. We can enforce and arrest people all day long, which we've been doing for several years, it's not having an impact, not at all. This meeting is very important to have it today for me is because May of twenty twenty-two, we had, in the month of May, we had eighty-one, excuse me, eighty-two non fatal overdoses in one month, the month of May, eighty-two. The following month, June, we had eighty-one non fatal overdoses. So this is a lot of work for the police department. So if we partner with, if the police department partners with these organizations that are focused on treatment and prevention, I guarantee you, you hear about the city of Flint having, um, high crime rate, violent crime rate. By us partnering with these organizations that are preventing and treating drug use, I guarantee you, you will see a reduction in our crime rate, you will see a reduction in our crime rate. The reason why I say this is because if you look at the majority of the crimes in Flint, you can have a crime at the highest level of homicide and at the lowest level of larceny. But I guarantee you, you look at some of those crimes, there's some type of element of narcotic use and some type of domestic violence, burglaries, home invasions. Grand theft auto, rapes, there's an element of narcotics involved in it.
Sex trafficking.
Sex trafficking. So if we reduce, if we reduce, what I'm saying for the police department, if we get involved and partner with these organizations, my goal as a law enforcement agency is to reduce the demand for these drugs. Reduce that demand for those drugs, you're gonna see the crime rate reduced, it's automatic. And that's not me talking, that's evidence, it's evidence based. Now we take, I get you one say, we take one, if we, I don't care if you, if, if someone, um, walks into the police department, this, this what I'm hoping, someone walks in the police department with a, with, with a friend, a relative and say, my relative needs help, they have a drug addiction. We get that person help, which we will do, we offer that, then we're gonna reduce that crime rate. That's one person off the drug. And we multiply that by being aggressive with it, being consistent, not just doing it for a field goal, but this, this is a consistent program that we wanna get involved with and that we will get involved with and we have been. So that's just my philosophy. We have, we have plenty of funding to conduct enforcement. We've been enforcing for years, I've been personally involved in enforcement side of it. So we're gonna try, we're gonna be just as aggressive with helping with those organizations that are focused on prevention and treatment. Cause by being focused on those organizations, we're gonna decrease that demand. Thanks.
So on, on the months like where you had eighty-two non fatal, um, drug overdoses, did you track if there were like specific houses that had repeat calls to where there was, you know, once a week, every two weeks, there was, you know, fire trucks there, county officers there, you know, the whole street is filled, filled with our services being paid at this house.
Yes, yes we have. By coincidence, there's a house in the third, in, in the third ward, in the Rowley Wood area. We have five separate individuals overdosing in that one house, five. So we have that data, we know.
You know, if, if, if the neighborhood, if we see, you know, on, say on a Friday evening, multiple cars pulling in and out of there, you know they're dealing that day. And then, you know, later on that weekend, then, you know, you know there's gonna be some calls and then, you know, and they're gonna, you're gonna have to have, you know, multiple resources out there to try to save their lives. But you know that every week that they're, they're moving drugs through there, you know, is there a way that you're tracking these specific drug houses that are having?
Yes.
Incidents?
Yes, we are, uh, that's a great question. So I have officers assigned for the enforcement side, I have an officer assigned to the Flin area Narcotics Group, Fang, and I have an officer assigned to the DEA, Drug Enforcement Administration. So they're responsible for the, um, enforcement side as well as our special investigative unit, they do narcotic investigations. But we've been doing this for years and we're not in the business of arresting people addicted to, to heroin or, or narcotics. We wanna get them help. So can I say, doing my fifteen years of narcotic investigations, have I ever arrested a, um, charged a person that we, that a user that we caught with, um, a user amount of narcotics, absolutely not one, and I ran into several. I used them to find out their source of the narcotics, that's what you're talking about. So we use them to find out their source, but if they haven't committed what we refer to as a residual crime, we try to get them help, we try to get them away, separate them from this atmosphere, this environment of narcotics. So I think that's the best approach we can take. Oh, yes ma'am.
So what about the ones that have a drug house that's doing the selling and you don't do anything with them? I have neighbors that say they have drug houses by them and they keep calling the police and they're not doing anything.
No, we, yes, we, you can call nine one one and report, you can call our tip line and report the drug house and we will respond. I can guarantee you that house will get some type of enforcement, it, it, it's on a list. That's why I have the officers assigned to the special investigative unit, Flin area Narcotics Group, the DEA. Yes ma'am?
Uh, yes, I'd like to know what's going on with the fact that you put down a mini station here in this building, what's going on with that?
Uh, that's a great question.
And also why is it night program for only that?
The what?
It's night program that you have.
No, that's, that's not our program, that's the sheriff's department's program.
Oh, excuse.
What was that? What was that? Well, a lot of it's the neighborhood watch program, COVID nineteen, it's all a lot of that, that activity. But I'm willing to have a discussion, cause I, I, those community type organizations, we need them activated cause you are our eyes and ears in, in the neighborhood, so I'm, I'm open for discussion to reactivate. I agree.
Chief Green, can you address the, the mini station?
So we, we've been in negotiations with the mini station, it's a, it's a long lengthy legal process as far as getting the lease. We're trying to get some of this, this operating up and running a hundred percent, but that, actually we had that discussion, uh, with my command staff last week, so that's still, that, that will happen. Six years ago, I was gonna say two years, it wasn't me.
All right, thank you, I wanna give him a round of applause. I just want, um, you guys to know that this is some, um, resources that I got from the city of Flint, the informational table. If you know anybody that needs some help with their hot water heater, we the supplier here for, um, the city of Flin has a free hot water heater replacement through G Card. They also, um, Habitat for Humanity has a, um, critical home repair program. You can call Habitat for Humanity if you need some help with your home, with a critical home. And then Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund, MYHAP program, they are helping people that's behind in their taxes if you guys need help, so if y'all need to get a flyer, I do have some. Um, what I was doing when I was passing out flyers in the neighborhood, I was also passing out these flyers. So there are some residents already in the neighborhood that receive, um, these applications to try to get them to. I wanna also thank the Rowley Wood Neighborhood, um, I see you guys here and Sam from the store, um, of course from Crazy Lake for, um, showing up today. Without further ado, I would like to bring up our mayor of the city of Flint to talk briefly about what's going on in the city of Flint. You know, uh, we never know, he be so busy, whether he gonna be able to make some hard meetings, so when he here, we always wanna welcome him, so welcome Mayor Shugmane.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
You know, today's a very exciting day, you know, I, I thank God for it every single day. And this room is filled with concerned hearts and souls about what is going on in our community. I wanna, uh, thank Councilman Murphy and Councilwoman Priest, give her a round of applause for putting this together. This is what elected leadership is supposed to do about engaging our, our community. And now we have a very angry society, we're very frustrated and angry about things that's not going on. But I wanna encourage you by taking a look around this room and seeing all the engaged people that's here. You have two branches of government, you know, you have the county here, well, you have three, you have the county, the city and the state here. You have your people here talking about the issues that's facing you. And as we rebuild our community, change is here now. We're working together with historic programs like the Land Bank program, with the city of Flint, uh, Philanthropic and as federal government, putting together a package in Flint, more than twenty-two hundred structures, blighted structures will come down. But now we have to shift our focus, what are we gonna put back up into these places, these vacant places? Our goal here in the city of Flint is to repopulate our area, to educate our kids well, to make sure we have a safe environment. Uh, Chief Green and I have been, uh, we grew up together. And I remember as it relates to the opioid money which was, I was brought here, and I'm gonna keep it very brief around that topic. But crack cocaine hit and exploded upon our communities in the mid eighties, in the late eighties. And it was terrible. I believe that drug addiction is a disease and we're gonna treat it as a disease. And a lot of the opioid dollars is gonna be moving toward treatment for those individuals, not criminalizing those individuals that may need help. That is the main thing to do and that's what we're doing in the city of Flint, we're gonna move with intent and focus on doing that. So therefore I will, uh, deputize each and every one of you guys as ambassadors of good information. Because this room, there may be maybe sixty people here, you know a lot of people. So you are ambassadors and the carrier of good information. Because outside of this room, sometimes misinformation gets out and disinformation. Because of the social media outlets, people are producing, uh, misinformation to help, uh, give lift to our frustration. And so when there's absence of good information, imaginations take place, disinformation happens, we get frustrated. Structures starting to come down, uh, just this past week. Federal announcements of four more million dollars for commercial structures starting to come down. Crime is down inside the city of Flint. We're still, are under a gun violence emergency, but definitely it's down, not saying that it's at a level that we want it to be, but we have to keep pushing back. And so everyone is an ambassador in this room of hope, let's keep moving forward. You know, we talk about an angry American society, more than six hundred and forty-eight mass shootings last year. More than a hundred and fifty this year, outpacing last year. More than two hundred and eighty-eight school shootings. It's an angry society, but it's gonna be those good individuals like us to push back. You know, Martin Luther King said once, it's not the words of our enemies that we will remember, but it's the silence of our allies that we will remember. So it's important for all of us to engage where we are. Chief Green is here, he's a product of this community, born and raised. I'm here, Quincy Murphy, Judy Priest, Cynthia Neely, we're here. Resources are being made available. So we're pouring resources in at the point of forty-nine, well, forty-five thousand, million dollars, forty-five million dollars toward the demolition of vacant and blighted structures inside Genesee County. But there's thirty-three units of government inside of Genesee County, we are one. And really we work together, but they are our competitors, competitors for jobs, competitors for attracting new things. And we're fighting and we're winning right now. Oakwood City, the third largest brownfield site in the state of Michigan, just sold a three hundred million dollar deal, asking capital. Congratulations Quincy Murphy, that's your award. New jobs, thirty-five hundred, good paying, little jobs coming here. New jobs, thirty-five hundred, good paying, liberal jobs coming here, right? The focus of our downtown area, the bricks. They haven't been replaced since nineteen thirty-six. They're coming up now and we're replacing them. We need a focal point. We need something to attract and make us a destination city. A state park, economy. These are not words. This is happening right now. But we need help. We just can't do it. And sometimes when we're frustrated, we're angry, we have misdirected hostility. We need people playing on the team of right. And this is what we're doing. So, black, white, richer, poor, Republican or Democrat, we need everybody's helping this. And so with the opioid money, as Chief Green stated, we're providing Narcan kits. We're providing areas of hope for those that may be seeing their life as bleak and they're using drugs. I'm even providing fentanyl testing strips. Yes, I'm providing fentanyl testing strips because this is a deadly drug, and if it misused, it kills you. And I'm, I said it before, people, you know, that's using, they want to get high and not die. It's much like the, the labor replacement program. We have to do these things that's very important. And we have to do so as one community, as one society. And this is not a speech, but this is a mission of us all. These structures are coming down. What's next? What are we gonna put up in those structures? You had a question about small lot sizes back there, right? Let's combine these lot sizes and give it to you for the price of one lot. I, I can't expect people to want to come and build new homes on small lots when we have a bigger population. Let's combine these lots. Let's give you an opportunity to build. Let's look at modular homes. Let's look at ways to be able to do so. I see you, I'm not forgot you. So, Chief Green is on the battlefield. Police mini stations, let me tell you about that question, and ask that question. We have four open operational rehab remodeling. But police officers don't sit in mini stations. We need volunteers. Who's willing to volunteer? Who's putting some skin in the game?
Six years ago, I, I was a volunteer.
Okay, we gotta sign up for you right away. I'm gonna make sure, I'm gonna take, get you a time card too, a volunteer time card. But the, the fact of it is that, that when we put several mini stations, it's about crime lodges, that we talked about. Who's volunteering? The silence of our allies, is it through your effort? Okay, uh, yes.
I forgot what I was gonna say.
I've talked long enough, Green.
I remember what I was gonna say. That lot behind me, I even offered down at the land bank to do a few yardage. Because I have all the equipment I need, you know, it's got a small piece of yardage. That was seven years ago. I didn't get any shelter at home, so.
Yeah, but we're here now, and I think I heard Michael Freeman offer to you to take a look at that property today, and he gave you the number. So now we're moving forward, not looking back. Not looking back. I trust Michael Freeman. He's a friend of mine. Uh, at the age of twenty-one, we were working together and reaching the runaway shelter. So I know he has a heart for his community.
My thought is to the you, uh, please chief. Say, you know somebody that's on drugs. Okay, say if you had some buyers here today, between all of us, I'm sure all of us, somebody knows somebody that's on drugs. If you had a printout on the, uh, organization that supplies or where, wherever they can go for help or whatever, say you got a niece or nephew or even a child, you can hand that to them, but you would have a printup where you're offering them help and where they can get it, if they need it and want it. Because sometimes you got people that don't know where they can go and get help. Print it up where, what does it take for you to reach the limit that where you need help? And even though they may not need it then, they may take it and put it somewhere and one day they might look at it and say, "I need some help." And call that number and try to get some help.
Yeah, but what it is, is the information, uh, the way they need to summon that information, that's why we need ambassadors. Uh, we have more than two hundred and ninety churches inside the city of Flint. Somebody's in the church every Sunday morning. We can use that, that area to be able to, uh, produce, uh, a networking system that we can get to everybody so they can find the area of hope. We don't want to take everyone to jail that has an issue or problem. I know, I know, I'm just saying, but that's what we don't want to do. We don't, see, the hospital sometimes ends up overloaded because they don't have a place for treatment for these individuals that go. Uh, the hospital beds are for sick individuals, not mistapace or drug use, but we need a residential place for them to be able to be lodged and get treatment. That's what we're looking at with some of these things that we're doing with these opioid dollars. I'm gonna get to you, and you, and then I'm gonna get down before, uh, Quincy Murphy's giving me the mean eye.
Yeah, I got a question. What about, uh, for people that need help, like say, just blah blah with the house, and all that, that you got a government thing that's supposed to be around it, that's supposed to help mark? You call and they say, "No, we don't do that." Where are we supposed to do?
Well, you gotta know where, you gotta know where to call because Quincy Murphy, Councilman Quincy Murphy.
I called G Card and everything.
There are many different avenues to get the help that you need. You gotta know where to call to get the help. You got G Card, Catholic Charities, for certain things and, uh, certain things. No one should be able, uh, to get put out of their house for the lack of paying taxes right now, or mortgages. MIHAP of the state of Michigan is paying up to twenty-three thousand dollars. For twenty-five thousand dollars, right now for back mortgages, utilities, uh, taxes, uh, Catholic Charities, G Card. You just gotta know where to call and get that good information to them. That's, that's all it is about, knowing where to call to get your help. And it was one more here, and then I'm out.
My question would be to you, is it possible that you do know the people that are addicted to heroin, okay, whatever their drug name be? And we do have some of the facilities that's here, but you have some facilities that have been closed down, that's further away. Because if you take them out of the situation to still be in here and drink, and take them somewhere else, this makes it where it's more harder for them to come back and redo that same cycle all over again. Because history does repeat itself. You do know why, um, you know I made a mistake in my life a long time ago. Diamond Williams married me and my wife, and I've been home seventeen years. And I made a promise that I would get back to Flint. I was flatbed driver, I had six hard drives. I'm still not gonna stop. I still do. Jump starts lockout, tire change, to help anybody out. And someone that I know that is in trouble, I do my best to help out. But a lot of these other facilities that has been closed down, they are vacant. I have asked a question, and me and a lot of other guys, we're trying to fight and try and do the same thing that you're doing, but we're getting kind of like shut down. I'll talk to you later on another day, but I'm just giving that out there too.
Thank you for all what you're doing for all those individuals. Give him a round of applause. But what we're doing with these opioid dollars, these are not just dollars that's just dropped to us. We gotta make a good arrangements for these dollars, and these dollars are going to those organizations and activities that's gonna provide these services and the help to those individuals. That's where these dollars are gonna be directed to, giving them the resources to be able to help people. And that's what, one of the things we're doing. Now, outside the city of Flint area, there are other communities and other, uh, municipalities that have been awarded dollars as well. But the dollars that we receive are for the Flint-based area, and that's where our dollars are gonna stay within the fort, boundaries of the city of Flint. And we have good facilities. Yes.
Would you run to be our governor? Please?
I had here when I started this journey. I don't have much left.
We need you there.
Well, I'm here with, with now. We are here, we're working together, we are a team. Thank you, and God bless you guys.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you one question? I'm the former vice president of, of Flint NIM. And, we don't have money earmarked to help people keep roofs on their houses. And that's one of the big problems with blight, is that when a person's roof leaks, it gets in the walls, causes mold problems, causes electrical problems. Out of the ARPA money that we have received, have we earmarked any money to help people who cannot go to the bank and get a loan? Because when your roof go, your house go. And people move out of their house, and that creates more blighted houses after they strip them and all of that. So, do we have any money earmarked to help people get roofs, repairs, or roof replacements?
Yeah, we have organizations that earmarked to be able to provide those level of services. But the greater problem, when you dig deeper into it, right? If you don't have a roof, you can't get insurance. And if you can't get insurance, you can't get a commercial lending, uh, opportunity, right? So we have to really look at some of the systemic problems, uh, providing people with the help that they need. And they are, they're for G Card, providing this level of service, state programs providing this level of services. But definitely there are services, but it's about knowing how to execute and engage those services. But yes, to answer your question, yes, but if one of you applying straight directly to us and coming to get those dollars, we will use every opportunity to get those dollars.
Did we earmark any of the ARPA money?
I said yes. That was the very first thing. I said yes. Now you're going on to another question. I don't, I'm not gonna give you all the answers, right? But I said yes for organizations to provide that, right? So organizations like, uh, Habitat for Humanity and other organizations to provide those level of work, we'll be doing that, right? So we will not get pigeonholed or attracted to how much and where, but there's many places to provide dollars for that area of help. And we are working together, because I just, I majored in ambassador. You're on the team. Alright, God bless you guys.
I don't want to get off the, this topic of the opioid, because we have, so speaking on that next. Number one, my family has been affected by opioid crisis. I've had, um, a sister and a niece both have overdosed. They are alive, and they are well and they are recovered. Or in recovery, one for thirty years, one for ten. So, thank God. But in regards to the ARPA dollars, we did create a committee, and we did go through the application process for organizations to apply for those funds. The process of evaluating those applications starts tomorrow, okay? And, um, there's over two hundred organizations requesting funds. So, the goal is, I think we have five million dollars budgeted currently for home repair. Not necessarily for roofs, but for home repair. That's a preliminary number. We know that the budgets is, the way that the council approved the budget is not how the budget's going to end up, or how we're going to end up spending the money down the road. Because some things that we, we budgeted for are gonna come in less, some are gonna come in higher. So there will be some shifting of funds, and I just wanted to let you know that and answer that. Because there are a lot of questions out there about the ARPA dollars and the ARPA process. We do hope to get more money involved in that. We hope that our partners who are applying for those funds have matching dollars that they can add to those, make those monies grow.
Thank you. Uh, once again, um, remember, I know, um, there's been people reaching out to me to join and help support the cleanup on May twenty-first at Good Church. So, um, Pastor Robertson over here, if anyone wants to help with the cleanup, y'all can, um, see Pastor Robertson at the end. Also, um, Kenyatta Dotson, um, wanted me to make sure that I announced that they got the Flint Registry Program, get connected to services and programs, plus a fifty-dollar thank you check when fully enrolled. Um, she left some, um, literature here at the tables, and I think they got some of these back there in the back for those who want to take, um, the registry. But since we're talking about the opioid epidemic, um, they did a great, the Greater Flint Health Coalition did a great presentation at city council, and I wanted to bring them here to talk about the services that they can help provide. So without further ado, I want to bring up Kelly Annie's work with the Greater Flint Health Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Murphy. Uh, I've really enjoyed being here tonight, listening to all of you talk about the needs, the ideas you have around addressing the opioid epidemic, things that you're seeing in your communities. Um, and I'm really excited to share that we have solutions to some of those things, and that your ideas of how to respond are happening. They're being implemented with a slew of community partners that are already doing the work, and we want to continue to help support them and increase support so we can help people. And I love the way Chief Green put it, we want to reduce the demand, right? We reduce the demand, we get people the help that they need, then we can see lives transform, and we can see communities change. And we can put an end to this epidemic and have a healthier Flint, uh, moving forward, which is what everybody wants. Uh, so, uh, I am the instructor of mental health and substance use initiatives for the Greater Flint Health Coalition. Uh, proudly have served in the city of Flint through a variety of programs and services for about six years now. Um, I'm not a resident, um, but Flint has hurt. Uh, so I'm here to share a little bit about the work that we're doing. I wanted to create some awareness around the programs and services that we have outside of the opioid epidemic. Uh, not a lot of people know what the Greater Flint Health Coalition does. We're actually quite involved in a lot of different programs and services that you've probably seen around. Uh, so we have our HACES program, it's financial literacy. So if you need help with your, um, taxes, you need to understand how to get your, uh, earned income tax credit, we have programs for that. If you need to get connected to food, housing, clothing, a primary care physician, uh, you name it. We have a Mid Michigan Community Health Access Program. Uh, they, they have a number of, uh, social workers, nurses, community health workers, uh, that can connect you to resources and services, um, nearly immediately. Uh, we have our Flint Recast Program that we operate in partnership with the city of Flint, uh, that is focused on resiliency and trauma response. We have our healthcare education and employment assistant training program. That's a free program that we run in partnership with Michigan Works. So if you are interested in entry-level healthcare, uh, jobs, we have free healthcare training for you. We put you through a program, we get you connected to employers, and before you know it, you're working in the healthcare field here locally in Flint. We have nutrition programs for our Commit Your Fit program. We have healthcare coverage. So if you are not connected to health insurance, we have programs, uh, through the federal government that we partner with to connect children and adults to healthcare coverage. Everyone should have coverage, and we're very, uh, firm advocates for making sure that you have the benefits that you need. And we also partner with the Flint registry. I'm gonna go over here and go onto my next slide here. Uh, so, this is hard to see, but I just wanted to point out, we have a number of strategies. Uh, the Greater Flint Health Coalition is a neutral convener, uh, collective impact organization, which basically means that we work with a bunch of community partners, uh, from your highest level CEO to your community organization, uh, you know, down the road. Yeah, sorry. Oh, good. I can speak really loudly too, so if it doesn't work, silly, fine. Uh, so we work with everybody we can to address health issues, any sort of health issues.
It's, it's, oh, God, that was me. It's Paul.
Hi, Mike. Uh, okay, so, anyway, we're a neutral convener, collective impact organization. We've been here for about twenty-seven years, serving Flint and Genesee County. My role at the Health Coalition is to focus on mental health and substance use initiatives. Uh, we have a slew of strategies, all from prevention, harm reduction, treatment, behavioral health, recovery, and those social determinants of health, those like basic needs that someone might have connected to behavioral health or substance use related issues. We have this, what we call the Community Life Strategy Map. So we're looking at all of the different ways that we can prevent substance use, all of the different ways that we can provide harm reduction, like Narcan, like fentanyl testing strips, like syringe exchange programs, uh, all the ways that we can provide treatment support for people, behavioral health support. How can we help the recovery community? Because it's one thing to go through treatment, but it's a whole other thing to live in recovery. So we want to help support efforts that increase someone's likelihood of maintaining and achieving long-term recovery. Uh, and then again, social determines of health, one of those basic things that we can connect people to that, and remove those barriers for them to be able to look at the other things in their life. Uh, maybe their behavioral health, their substance use. It's difficult to focus on your behavioral health or your substance use if you don't know where you're gonna eat, sleep, if you don't have childcare, if you don't have a job. So we try to remove those barriers. And we don't just do that alone. You'll see all these different little icons up here. We have a partner key, and all of these icons you'll see are partners that we work with here locally to implement these strategies. We want to increase capacity. We want to make sure that the partners that are doing the work have what they need and are able to connect with the people that they are trying to serve. That's our job at the Health Coalition, is to increase capacity, address needs, and push work forward so we can serve people best. Uh, I'm not gonna be exhausted because I know that we're short on time, but I wanted to slip over to... Chief Green covered the data beautifully, so I'm not gonna labor on that. We have our Quick Response Team Initiative that Chief was kind of talking about as one of the ways that we can connect people to treatment. So our Quick Response Team Initiative was born in twenty-twenty, which is a horrible time to launch a program, but we went for it because we knew that our community needed it. Um, and of course, with the, uh, COVID-19 pandemic, we saw overdose activities skyrocket. There was nothing to do. People were depressed. Hopelessness was at an all-time high. And what makes you feel better? Sometimes it's substances. So we saw increase happen, so we knew we had to act quickly. We partnered with a local dream provider, New Paths, uh, who also has a sober facility for people twenty-three hours, seven days a week. If you need a place, a safe place, where you can just sober up, as they say. If you need a place, a safe place, where you can just sober up, as they say, and a hot meal, you can take a shower, talk to somebody about treatment, it's on seven-six-five East Hamilton. It's free, there's no authorization required, you can park it there, just be safe, and you can talk to someone, you can talk to a peer recovery coach there. Peer recovery coach, someone lived and experienced in addiction, they've been there. They've gone through addiction, they've gone through treatment, and they're in recovery, and they can walk you through that process. That's the beautiful thing about the Quick Response Team, is we take that peer recovery coach model, and we arm our law enforcement with that tool in their tool belt. So as Chief said, when someone shows up and administers Narcan, one of those officers shows up and administers Narcan, they can say, hey, would you want to talk to somebody? I have someone, they're not a law enforcement officer, I have someone that can come talk to you that knows exactly what you feel right now in this moment, who can help you navigate treatment, or at least plant a seed of hope. We talk a lot about planting seeds of hope for people, because we know that because addiction is a brain disease, not everyone is gonna be ready for treatment when we're ready for them to go to treatment. So we try to create trust, we try to build relationships with people, and help them understand when they're ready, what path that they can walk. So our peer recovery coaches are part of our Quick Response Teams. We arm our police officers, we have over ten partners right now. Flint Police Department is on there, one of our partners, the Sheriff's Department is on there. See, a variety of partners. We want to make sure that our law enforcement agencies can connect people. So if an overdose happens, they can connect them right then and there, or the coaches can help the next day. I want to share some outputs. So we don't just talk about it, we walk about it. These are six months, just the last six months. We received over five hundred and forty referrals from our local hospital systems, church fathers, community partners. So a place like this, the Franklin Avenue Mission, could make referrals to our Quick Response Team, a peer recovery coach show up here. If you have in your neighborhood, if you have a neighborhood group and you want to make a referral, you can do that, we can partner with you. We want to make sure it's easy as possible for people to get connected and talk to somebody who can actually help. And they don't just refer people to New Path, they don't just refer to one provider. Someone back there in the corner was talking about other treatment provider locations that aren't in the city, because not everybody should stay here when they're working on their treatment journey, right? Sometimes this is the environment, it can be triggering, and they need to go and do a treatment program somewhere else. Our program makes sure that we find treatment solutions that are right for individuals. No matter what they want, we want to make sure that we can address their best. We can address them as best as possible based on their needs. We've connected with over twenty-three hundred people, client engagements. We also make referrals to our CHAP program, Community Health Access Program that I talked about. We've got a forty-four percent success rate. So when someone comes into our system looking for treatment, we don't just say, okay, let's get you, you know, into treatment. We say, hey, where are you sleeping tonight? Hey, have you had a warm meal today? So those referrals go to our CHAP program, we've got a forty-four percent success rate with that, we're really proud of that. We've trained over sixty-four law enforcement officers. We've distributed over fifty-seven hundred resources. We have pocket cards with QR codes on there, we've got a warm line, we have a text line, some people can call and text us twenty-four-seven, yes ma'am?
Do you provide free Narcan kits?
We do, yes, we absolutely do, we provide free Narcan kits. I'm actually, on the next slide. We also distribute fentanyl testing strips. When the mayor said that they distribute fentanyl testing strips, that's a partnership with the Greater Flint Health Coalition. We proudly supply those fentanyl testing strips to the city of Flint and throughout the rest of the city, Tennessee County. Because we don't want people to have to wonder where to get them. We want it to be free, easy, and accessible. I'm gonna answer this, and then if you have a question, go ahead.
You can also get them at the MTA bus terminal for free.
Yes, they do, and we are partnered with that project as well, at the Flint Downtown MTA Station. We distribute free Narcan kits, free fentanyl testing strips, no questions asked. There's no one there to monitor it, and you can take as many as you want, it's completely free. You want to press, you know, G four ten times, you get ten kits, go on your way. Same thing with the fentanyl testing strips. We provide free Narcan training, so if you are in a community, or church, or go to the organization, and you want them to be trained on how to use Narcan, it's quick, it's easy, it's free. We are happy to come out to you and provide that training. We want to make sure that our community understands what the signs of overdose look like, because you can't administer Narcan if you don't know what overdose looks like. So we want to make sure you all know what that looks like, and then you know how to respond. So we're happy to come and do a training. We'll train one person, we'll train a hundred people. Bring us out, we want to empower you to do what needs to be done. You can also go to our website, we have a five-minute training video right there, so maybe you get training. If you want a refresher, go right to our website, train. You can also request a kit on our website. We'll just ask for some basic information, we'll mail it to you, we'll meet you somewhere. It should not be hard to get these resources, it should not be hard to connect to treatment. We want to remove the hard, we want to make it easy and timely. We want you to help people, we're here to be the helpers. The last thing I'll say before I go, because I'm sure I'm running out of time, we have other resources for prevention specifically. So if you're that loved one, and you want information, say you have a loved one who's using heroin, and you're like, I don't know anything about heroin, I just know that it sounds bad and they're hurting. We have resources, we have them on our website, which is knowmoregenesci.org. But you can, we also have paper copies, we're happy to provide these anywhere to anybody. We can give them to you in the hundreds if you want. So we've got them for alcohol, cocaine, opioids, heroin, methamphetamine. We also have some for mental health, because we know that substance use is often co-occurring, which means people don't just have a substance use disorder, they might also have some behavioral health things that are happening, and we want to support them to work through that as well. These are all on our website, I have so many things I can talk about today, I know time's running short. Thank you so much to Councilman Murphy and Councilwoman Priestley for inviting me. Please let us know how we can support you, we are here solely to help. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that great information. When they came to city council, I was like, oh my God, that's right up what we need to talk about in the community. So this piece that we're gonna talk about before we get ready to conclude for tonight, and thank you guys for being so patient. I kept, when I was, I kept receiving a letter in my box about the Latinx community, and they giving me these lists of houses and buildings that they wanted to tear down, and I'm like, okay, how do we tackle this? So between me and Councilwoman Judy Priestley, we have the Davidson Road Corridor, Franklin Corridor, and I have Lewis Corridor, but because we work so great together, we are working, and we are willing to work, to listen, to see what we can do to revitalize Davidson Road, Franklin, Door Highway, Lewis. But I drove down Lewis Street, I drove down Franklin Street. Everything that you guys see on the east side with all of these buildings, we want to do what we can. And when the mayor made that announcement about that four million dollars for demo for commercials, I'm like, oh yes, my top of the list is Franklin and Lewis Street.
Franklin, there is a demo, we had a...
It's terrible, it looked like they wanted to drop the bomb in some of them buildings. That's not bad, but we're gonna move forward, we can't talk about the past. When I met this young man, and he told me what they were doing at the Latinx Center, I was so excited, I'm so excited to have him on the agenda today to talk about what they're doing, and I'm so excited to be able to work with you and make this happen. So without further ado, I'll actually wind up.
Well, good evening, everybody. All right. I was interested to see how this mic was gonna work. But real quick, I want to say thank you to our council representatives for putting this meeting together. I've been Executive Director of the Latinx Technology Community Center for six years now, and I'm always excited when I see community engagement sessions just like this with our elected officials and with our local government. If you don't read the newspaper, I would encourage you to read a newspaper. There's so much information about what's happening in our community that I think is vital to take advantage of. There was a lot said tonight that resonated with me. And I, y'all done messed up and gave me the mic. I'm ready to do a summary for another twenty minutes. But the biggest thing I want to say is, I'm excited for what the possibilities are in the city of Flint right now. There's a lot that's happening. Right hearing today about the demolition that will be happening to remove these blighted-out properties is hopeful, is hopeful. I would say at the community center, right, the Hispanic Tech Center, if you haven't been there in a while, I would encourage you to come stop by, we've done a lot of renovations. But our motto has always been people power, and that's how we get things done. If you take a look at Lewis Street, you might see it looks hopefully a little better than six years ago. All right now, all right now. But a lot of that comes out of a space from what I say, my family, or just me growing up. I think about when I was sixteen years old over on Franklin in Kansas. Right, I stayed at my cousins', and I always wanted to make a difference, and there was this blighted-out building right in front of us. I walked by every day going to school, and I said, I'm gonna do something today. I'm gonna do something today. And I never did anything. Then one day, I actually went on the property, bent down, grabbed the brick, and I said, I'm gonna start cleaning this up, and then I got scared, I picked up my first brick, and I said, what if I get in trouble just trying to clean up a blighted-out property? I don't own this property, I don't know who owns it. You know, last thing, I want somebody to run up on me, you know, because I ain't know where I was, you know, who property I'm on. And I get really, when I reflect on that time, it's an interesting way when I reflect. Because I'm sad I didn't do anything, because I stopped myself from making a difference in my community. When I took this position six years ago, at that time, I always felt like I needed permission from somebody to start cleaning up, to start making a positive impact. Then when I took this position, I started asking around, I said, hey, who do I need to have permission to to clean this up? I asked everybody I could think of, nobody told me none, I said, okay, I guess we just been getting in trouble. But for six years, right, we've been going around the community, we maintain over a hundred lots. And the biggest thing is, right, we wanted to revitalize and transform vacant lots into areas of purpose for the community, that bring community together. So with that, we have a lot of programs and services at the tech center. I would say the biggest thing is that we have just our resource center. If you have a question, a comment, a concern, let us know. Right, there's always room for more resources, I hope we get some more resources. We did apply for some ARPA funding, but we'll see, that's out of our control. So with that, we have a youth program, right? If you have some, if you know some kids in the neighborhood, we're looking for kids in between fourteen to nineteen. We have a youth summer leadership program, that's our workforce training program. You probably see us in the neighborhood during the warm months, right? There's a bunch of us. Every day, the youth are out there cleaning up the neighborhood, and then frequently, about eight times a year, we organize pretty large cleanups. I think last year, we filled six forty-yard dumpsters, and all we used is shovels, crooners, rakes. It's unfortunate, because a lot of these properties need a bulldozer. And a front loader. But we'll walk around the fallen-down tree, we'll spray Frank the Tree, carve something nice in it. But I would encourage you, right, get involved if you can. Right, we appreciate all our supporters, the people that visit us at the center, that support our work, that contribute towards our work, it means a lot. But again, I want to thank our council representatives for organizing this meeting. I think it's so important that we see these types of meetings on the east side, and I would love for y'all to stop by, because we would love to share more about our work, what we're doing, and how we want to organize people to make a change. Thank you. All the questions, yes, please ask questions. Where we at? Yes, we are on Lewis Street, excuse me, yes, we are right down the road, right on Lewis. Lewis and Hamilton, Lewis and Davidson, the two main streets, yes. Yes, my name is Asa Essencio Zucaro. My grandfather worked for the city of Flint when there was a parking wreck department. So he spent his whole career maintaining Curzon Park, Atwood, Waley Park, all the parks in the city of Flint. So it's beautiful to be able to, you know, continue some stewardship to keep our community clean. Yes, questions?
Actually, it's more of a comment, I'm just gonna say, when I first moved to the neighborhood, back to the neighborhood, I should say, Asa was one of the first people that was actually able to welcome me into the neighborhood, got us resources so we could help find jobs and everything else when we first got here and got settled back in. So, thank you.
Thank you, and, ready to turn that question over? Yes, sir, good morning.
You say you help people, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm listening.
I'm listening, I'm listening.
I worked at a store.
Yes, sir. I'm familiar.
And it closed?
Yes, I know.
But when I went, came out of your place,
Yeah.
And asked for your help,
Yes.
You didn't want to help?
Yes, sir.
Why was that? No, 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 no.
Yes, sir.
Do I know, am I right or wrong?
I remember you when you picked up the sword, yes, sir.
And asked him, I need help for a job. What's he telling me? I can't do nothing about it. Oh, but he wanted to talk a bit?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
He was just being a skinner that day.
But if you didn't have the resources, don't try showing up.
We had them.
The way is not good.
He just wanted to walk around that door. But yeah, when he went to the store, I was up there giving him compliments and all that, and showing friendship at my store. And now when it's closed down, we get robbed, you know? That's all right, though.
Yes, sir.
Who's getting robbed, flush it, it'll come down.
I will say, we have a couple of events coming up. I think the immediate event that I can think of is our Cinco de Mayo event. We're gonna have a large celebration downtown Flint in Buckham Alley. The next event we'll have is May twentieth, it's gonna be a health fair. I would encourage you to come out, we have some pretty good gift aways. We also give away our plants for you to take home and make your own garden at home, or help us plant our community garden. We give away around fifteen, one thousand five hundred plants, so I'd encourage you to come out. And then our next event will be June fifteenth, where we have a ribbon cutting ceremony, we have a community playground, and we will be showing off our renovated second floor. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for that, you're doing a great job over there. If you guys know, Ashbury Church is borderline third and fourth ward. They do a lot of water distribution, food giveaways. We originally was going to have our town hall meetings at the first one at Ashbury, but they doing renovation here, so I still wanted to invite them over to talk to us, to tell us what it is that they doing, and what they doing for our renovation to move forward, and how we can get involved. So without further ado.
All right, I'll promise that'll be quick, I know we all have places to go, I've got a baby waiting to get home for me. My name is Israel Logar, I'm with Ashbury, been here in Flint since two thousand sixteen. Thought it was gonna be two weeks, well, it's been a lot more. I now have a baby and a couple of homes on the east side, just a quarter mile away from here. When I came here, I connected with someone that introduced me to the community, and the arts, the downtown, I thought it was brilliant, the master plan, you know, that was very promising for me. And this individual introduced me to urban farming, and he showed me around. I've traveled all around the world, I've studied in the Netherlands and Sweden. I've seen a lot of poverty, but when I came to the east side of Flint, I never saw anything that was even close to the worst orphaned countries that I've been to. I was shocked, to be honest. But since that time, I picked up twenty lots on the east side of Flint, and I was gonna turn it into urban agriculture. And I didn't want to do it all by myself, I wanted to create something of a cooperative type of effort. And so I started to get to know the community more, who was doing what. Well, Ashbury had one hoop house at the time, and an orchard over by the Latinx Center. And now we have seventeen hoop houses, growing on fifty lots. And Asa, I just spoke to him just days ago, they're gonna utilize one of our hoop houses. That's only a block away, so it is about partnership, it's about community building. So it is about partnership, it's about community building. I also learned what a Flintstone is. I'm not a Flintstone, okay? But eventually, I might be considerably. If I stay around long enough, if y'all have me.
50 more years.
All right, 50 more years. But I created, so I studied finance, and I ended up focusing on microfinance. So I didn't study finance to become rich, I studied it because of how it's been used by many to cause problems for other people. So I studied microfinance while doing social impact investing and different things like that, but also local currencies. And so created something called My Flintstones. And the idea is that we can do things together and benefit together. So we want, we built a large urban farm, and we want individuals to connect with us, come out, volunteer, and then you get a My Flintstone they can utilize for a meal at Ashbury Cafe in our new community kitchen that's going to be launching this summer. So there are opportunities, and we want to, I want to expand those opportunities where individuals can even have a portion of our farm to participate in growing, where we can grow together. So what Ashbury currently does is grow, distribute, and engage. At our main site, we have a health center that has over 27,000 visits a year. We have an urban farm that grows over $200,000 worth of produce, which could be more if we cooperate and grow together. And then we have youth programming where we have roughly 40 youth per year work with us, some in summer and some all throughout the year. And we get, this year, I think we're going to get over $250,000 to pay youth. So if you have youth, connect with, well, the Flint and Genesee group, they're the ones who fund the SYI program. So youth need to get into the SYI program, and then you can choose different sites throughout the city for your youth to work. They get to choose. And we've been blessed with a lot of people, a lot of youth choosing us. They like what we're doing. And so if you have any youth, please, think about the SYI program and then think about Ashbury as well. And then we also look at ways to engage the community and have our youth do so. And we just got funding from CDBG and also the Healthy Food Financing Initiative, a federal program. In total, almost half a million dollars. And it's all about economic development on the east side of Flint. The building right next to Luigi's is going to be the site for this, and it's going to be an event center, a community kitchen type of thing. And I want that to be, you know, something that we think about building together. And so I invite everyone to engage with me and to engage with Ashbury, and hopefully we have a shared vision and can do great things together. Let us all have a wonderful night. If you have any questions? Any questions? My name's Israel Unger. Or Ezzy, a lot of people know me as.
Is that, do you have any more like the information of how to get more in touch and involved with the Ashbury?
Well, the easiest way is to go to the website, flinashbury.org. And there will be multiple ways that you can reach out to us that way.
Thank you, Israel. I met you when you first came to Polis, my nephew and your son were friends.
He was living with me then, so. And I grew up at Ashbury. Ashbury's got deep roots in this community. But, you know, I want you to think about Edible Flint has, if you want to feed yourself, a couple of pots, you can buy it for a dollar at Walmart, some dirt, throw some seeds in there, get some plants from Edible Flint, feed your family. You know, I'm a big gardener, I've said that before. So anyways, I want to thank everybody who came. If you have any questions, are there any questions that you haven't had answered that we can help you with today? Okay, my card was over there, I don't know if you've got any? Oh, yes, Paul, thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul, you going to give me some popcorn on my... Paul's great, you know, he's the one who does the sound for council. And he's working under extreme conditions right now, but he's looking forward to what happens when our council chambers get renovated. And I want to, since I mentioned that, I want to address one issue. Some people have complained that we are spending money for council chambers. That is ARPA dollars. I've said that was, that was my idea. And we are being very, I said selfish, in spending $400,000 on making our home welcoming for the community. Those people who you know who are wheelchairs, we were not really, there was no seating available for wheelchair people. They had to sit in the aisle. The sound system that Paul's been working with, people would complain about the sound on YouTube.
It's not my sound, it's your sound.
I didn't say, I said that you were working with. So we're trying to make it a better place for the entire city, and we'll see how it goes. But I want to thank you all for coming. I know Quincy's going to head home. He's got to go to bed. I'm always on him about sleeping because he's a third shifter, but I'll be here for a few minutes, and I'll be glad to talk to you and answer any questions. And thank you for coming, and have a good evening.